I do, I'm good. I got, I got a different prayer than last time. I'm switching prayers up. I, I think I'm gonna be anointed the chaplain of the commission.
I think that's a good, a good job. And listen, since you're good at this, you can just fall in my rotation.
Holiest of holy.
That's it.
Holy in my head, I think.
I kinda like doing this. I like doing rotations. Not particularly. I kinda said to give it that, oh, I loved it. I always had, as a kid, I used to very much hate reading. My kids never loved it.
Yeah, but that was back, back in those days. He didn't let his masters laugh.
Okay, Commissioner, ready? Good evening, everyone. Before our meeting actually begins tonight, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Brady, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we are gathered here today to serve you and conduct the affairs of the city of Sandusky. Give us knowledge and strength to do your will with a proper balance of eternal values and our present needs. May we accept our responsibilities and act with courage, considering the feelings of other people. Grant us a sense of justice and stewardship now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, hold the roll, please.
Here. 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 Here.
Folks, I'm gonna begin with a public service announcement tonight. I had a few precancerous spots burned off my faces. Many of those who are Irish do from time to time. It's a little flaky kind of stuff, looks like some peeling skin that never goes away, so it's good to get it early, and it's relatively painless. It's a little bit embarrassing. It's better today than it was on Friday. I was scheduled to go to a spaghetti meatball dinner fundraiser for the schools on Friday evening, and my wife dropped off my Sandusky high shirt so I could show my colors. And she looked at me, she said, "You should not come." You'll give people a scare that leprosy is back in town. So I didn't, and I'm very thankful for the fact that we don't yet have the high-definition television cameras in soon, but not tonight. So we will have, first, the, first order of business is the approval of the minutes. Would someone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watson.
I move that we accept the minutes of the August 22nd meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second discussion. Without objection, motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Return now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any of our regular agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts, please.
Members of the commission, my name is Bob Waldox. I live at 22, 2015 Seer Point Road. I'm here to talk to you tonight with regards to the city office move or the potential thereof. I just have a couple of quick points that I would like to ask or point out. I had the opportunity to go to the 20-minute ask and return rebuttal discussion that happened last week at one of the two meetings. I know the meeting was an hour short, or was an hour long, but we had about 20 minutes to discuss it with commissioners and the city. I would make these three points. I know your study says that there isn't a parking issue downtown. I manage WT Realty. We've been in town for more than 50 years. We've been on East Washington Row for more than 50 years. And I can tell you, having started in that building when I was eight years old, there's a parking issue on East Washington Row. I know your parking study says that you don't have a problem downtown, but I've lived through the time when we all had parking meter people out front, when we moved cars every two hours, when we justified where we parked. And I'm gonna tell you today that we are getting ready to move out of downtown to a new building or a renovated building on First Street. And our second reason for the move is, as we represent 7% of the city's population through our rentals in the city of Sandusky, we cannot serve them efficiently by our office on East Washington Row because there is a parking problem. I would make case in point, as last Friday, Friday is our normal payday for most of us that have jobs, and on last Friday, when the car show was downtown, we had four people that walked from Social Security Building because East Washington Row was closed. When the car show comes downtown, when the Ohio Bike Week comes downtown, and in normal course of business, there is a problem on East Washington Row where you are putting 15,000 of your 21,000 square foot office space. I make that as point number one. Secondly, I understand the need for the replacement of this building or the move of this building, and I'm not opposed to that discussion. However, I am opposed to the idea of emergency legislation. I understand the comment about tax credits potentially going away, and yet blighted areas are the new hot button for tax credits. The city of Sandusky has been in this conversation for a number of years, and the tax credit issue being pushed forward to get this, this application in by September 30th, I think, is unjust and unfair to the citizens of the city of Sandusky who have listened to this conversation for the last 10 years. I applaud the administration. I applaud the current members of the city staff who have worked very hard to try to get this done. I don't know in a time when we as a city have received as much money through grants as we have recently, and I thank them for their energy and for your commitment. However, I don't believe that emergency legislation for the move of this building that's been talked about for 10 years is so important that the city of Sandusky has a couple, three, four, five public meetings, two of them following your approval of the ordinance to make this decision. Finally, I would like to ask, and if staff knows this and it can be reported, I would like to ask the opinion of the chief building official and what he determined, or what his opinion is about this project. And I quote from the Sandusky Register from an article February 4th, 2014, titled, and by Mr. Oriole, "City Hall Fixes Too Costly." Sandusky Chief Building Official George Polis reiterated his longtime stance on City Hall. Build an entirely new structure as opposed to effectively lasting money piecemeal or otherwise upgrading or renovating the Meg Street building. Polis says he can build a completely new City Hall for about half the estimated cost of $6.7 million. He oversaw construction for Perkins Township New Government Complex Housing Administration, Building, Highway, and Police Operations totaling $3.3 million. The township facility debuted almost a year ago. "It doesn't make sense," said Polis, referring to spending more money on City Hall. "I feel uncomfortable spending upwards of $6 million on something that has old bones." I would ask you to also consider this last point. Based on 21,000, I think it's 21,528 square feet, 568 square feet, at $6 million, that's $278 a square foot to own a condominium. The apartments at $5 million for 18 is $277,000 per apartment. We know a little bit about apartments. I know a little bit about construction costs, and I'd like to ask Mr. Polis's opinion, if staff knows, of what he felt at $278 a square foot for a condominium that the building, that the city of Sandusky is going to consider paying for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldox. Anyone else wishing to address any of our regular agenda items? Please step to the microphone and give us your name and address.
James Miller, 3922 Deer Path, which is in the township, but I'm here as the CEO of Civista Bank. I had an eye appointment today, so pardon me if I have to go back and forth, and I wanted to tell the chief that so when he sees my eyes dilated, he knows that it's... (laughter) Parsh hours did this, not... In 1983, the Citizens Banking Company had a decision to make. Our location no longer worked well as a banking office. We were in a building that did have good bones, but it just didn't work. We had parts of it in the basement that were not handicap accessible. We had problems with HVAC. We were scattered through two storefronts. No matter how much money we spent to modernize, it was just not gonna work. We had options for relocation. Most were outside the city. In the end, the decision was made to remain in downtown Sandusky, and $2.5 million was spent on a new main office. We had been in downtown for over 100 years, and at that point, we believed we should invest in our heritage. Though it has been slow, we've seen continual improvement in investment in downtown over the last 30 years. But I will tell you, it was slow. You go back 30 years ago, there wasn't much downtown. As our community continues to evolve and become more recreational and entertainment-oriented, we have seen more solid investment in downtown. When out-of-town businesspeople come to our office, their first comment is, "How fantastic downtown Sandusky is in the waterfront, why aren't you doing more?" We see a momentum developing that sometimes occurs only in a generation. Now that we have the opportunity to relocate the city offices to a downtown location, it will bring more momentum to revitalize properties. It will bring more people downtown during the business day. It will bring additional customers to our restaurants and shops. It will encourage more investment. We have seen this in other communities. We have worked with customers in the Cleveland area who have utilized the historic tax credits to revitalize property, and I can tell you, in many cases, the tax, the tax credit is worth more to them than the property. So there's an incentive to do something. It is a unique component in a financing package to allow significant investment in property that ordinarily would not happen. It would be a shame to let this opportunity pass. The city now faces the same decision that the bank faced in 1983. The easy decision is to do nothing, or talk it to death. We would encourage the decision of taking the positive path of investing in our downtown. And I will add to my notes here that when we have people come to town from, we do a lot of business now in Columbus, Cleveland, the Dayton area, and they come to our offices, and when they come to our offices and transact business, the last place I'm gonna bring them is City Hall. Because, take a step back, folks, and look at this. It looks, we, we're taking on the, the appearance of an East German housing project. It's time to do something and move on. And with all the elements in place, I would strongly encourage, let's go ahead and move. We can't just continue to just talk about it. So, those are my notes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Carl McGookie. I live at 615 Columbus Avenue, Sandusky. I'm here and presenting as the Chair of the Bayfront Corridor Committee. For those who may not know, the Bayfront Corridor Committee is a cross-section of community stakeholders, serving at the pleasure of the city commission. We review proposed waterfront development projects relative to adopted plans and their benefit to the community, and make recommendations to the administration and city commission with the purpose of maximizing the advantages of Sandusky's strategic location on Lake Erie. At meetings on August 4th and again on August 17th, this project was reviewed by our committee, including presentations by and follow-up questioning of Chief Development Officer Lasco regarding the process. The discussions also included the DS Architect Report and Recommendations, as well as the proposal made by Vintage Development. After our discussions with Mr. Lasco, the committee believes we have been shown a strong competence by those who have worked on the plan. We like the innovative use, mixed use of the properties involved. We believe the public will need to be educated on the ample parking that is available to this project. We feel there is value in having City Hall near other government offices. We understand this project has the potential for spurring on additional development in the downtown area, and we feel the potential for the future development of the current City Hall site is also a plus for the city. Based on the above, at our August 17th, 2016 meeting, the committee passed the following motion. "The Bayfront Corridor Committee communicate to the city commissioners that it supports the proposed project and request that this commission continues to negotiate with all parties concerned to facilitate continued movement forward on this project." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGookie.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Al Nichols, 3308 East Beverly, also in the township, but I have a presence here in Sandusky with the 422 West Market with the accounting firm I work for. And I have one other small history. I've been the Chair of the Cities Finance Committee for 22 years. So I have seen a few ups and downs for dollars, and as Mr. Waldox says, we've talked about this a long time. We finally have an opportunity. This opportunity with the private-public partnership, we need to take advantage of it. The tax credits, as Mr. Miller said, I happen to sit on his board, and I see an awful lot of these come through. This is what makes or breaks these projects. Also, I've had the opportunity over time to see the city's finances, and the last few finance committee meetings, instead of taking my tums before I get in, I can actually say it's positive. I'm seeing an absolute growth. I looked at the last financial statement for the city. Things are going in a positive direction. We have cash flow. And also, everybody says, does this make economic sense? In my opinion, and the opinion of the finance committee, it does. Mr. Lasco made a complete presentation, how things were gonna break down. Mr. Lasco also promised to get back to the city finance committee as to how things are gonna break down, so that we are, I'm gonna say, overlooking it. Obviously, the commission votes for it. We're only making our recommendations. To me, this just makes sense because our debt is starting to roll off. In Mr. Lasco's presentation, I don't know if that was made public or not, Mr. Murray, with the chart?
Yes.
Okay. If you look at the chart that was made public, you can see how the debt flows down. And we are going to have the economics to do it. And I truly believe, once you get things moving in a positive direction, even though it may cost us some more money, if we get businesses downtown that are tax-paying businesses, that is just gonna be a domino effect, and it's just gonna be a positive for the city. Again, echoing Mr. Miller, the tax credits make it, and I understand that there's a timeline for that. The city finance committee met a couple of weeks ago and unanimously made the recommendation for the city to go ahead, and it's my strong opinion that this is something that is a positive move that will make things much better for the city in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Anyone else present wishing to address any of our agenda items? Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, we have a hearing that was then scheduled, a proposed amendment to the Planning and Zoning Code for non-conforming uses. And, who was present? Okay, Ms. Sparks, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. The proposed amendment this evening will modify Section 115102(c) regarding a substitution of a non-conforming use. The change actually will require notification to property owners within 300 feet of the proposed site in which the substitution of a non-conforming use is requested. As a reminder, a substitution of a non-conforming use is issued through our planning commission when a non-conforming use of a building is proposed to be changed to another non-conforming use of the same or a more restrictive use. Through the recent applications, communication with residents, and opinions of planning commission members and city staff, we found it important to propose this change to allow residents to be notified of a substantial change to their adjacent property.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Sparks or comments? It is a public hearing. Is anyone present who wishes to speak to the matter? If not, then the public hearing is closed, and we will take up the legislation shortly. Commissioners, we need a motion to accept the previous communication and recommendations from staff.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. In hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Ms. Chris, present item number one, please.
Item number one is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city managers to enter into a letter of intent with Vintage Development Group LLC related to the redevelopment of property and declaring that this ordinance shall be immediately read into accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed? Someone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watson.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance to be passed at second reading in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Second motion, second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Watson.
I wrote down a few notes. I've talked, I've had a ton of phone calls and taxes, and I'm sure everyone else has emails, and I feel that I did everything I possibly could do to educate myself on the letter of intent. I met and spoke with staff, attended the special finance committee meeting, attended the public firehouse meeting. I had, like I said, several phone calls, conversations, and that, and in the end, I had to take a hard look at this and look at myself in the mirror, and that's why I will support this, and I will be a yes vote.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I too have done a thorough, what I believe is a thorough educational investigation of the proposed letter of intent, as well as the proposed for the move of City Hall. There, I've gotten numerous calls and voicemails today. Haven't had the opportunity to return many of those calls. It's a passionate proposal. It's, some feel strongly on both sides. I do believe that the information that I've been provided through the finance, through city staff, through information from the public, I feel comfortable voting yes.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
There are certainly two sides to every issue, and we've heard from both sides on this one. It's a very serious business, anytime you're entering into a $6 million, perhaps someday it'll be an $18 million opportunity for the city. That said, I had serious concerns reading through the letter of intent myself, and I made the mistake of reading that document as if it was a construction specification. It is not. And I have been assured and convinced by our chief economic officer, Mr. Lasco, and the developers, that document is maybe the second or third step in a, in a very long journey. I am convinced that that document is just, as it's represented, it's a letter of intent. It is not a specification. If I thought for one minute that we were agreeing to a shell of a building without electrical panels, without electrical fixtures, without plumbing fixtures, I would certainly perceive this opportunity as something less than a, than a good opportunity. I'm convinced that we can no longer kick this can down the street. And I'm convinced that this is an opportunity, as Mr. Nichols, Mr. Miller, and Mr. McGookie have expressed, the time for action is now. I think this commission has an opportunity and an obligation to do just what we've done about this issue. Vote our conscience. I'm prepared to do that.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Paul.
I recognize it, no matter what we, I, first of all, thank everybody who participated in this, the staff and everyone that, who's done their research. I listened to the presentations. I happen to agree with Mr. Waldox. I think that this is more risk than opportunity. I shouldn't say that. This has been portrayed as, as having opportunities, and we can't kick the can down, down the It is possi, and, and also portrayed as potential. Before we invest what really turns out to be about $20 million, because once we commit to this, 10 here, we still have another 10, 11, and unknown, actually, to deal with the, what's been called a Justice Center. So it's all risky, and I believe that we should have had a conversation with the community about whether or not we actually want to go into debt for this, for, for this building. The, we had adequate amount of time to do it, doing this under Section 14. Since this conversation started, I think the specific conversation for what we're doing now, at least as far as I can tell, at least far as back as last November, coming up with a short deadline like this that requires that we vote this in without the community having an opportunity to weigh in on it, I mean, in a serious manner. We've had a couple of meetings in which the bulk of the time was spent by the staff presenting essentially what, to me, and I will, it's a characterization, it was a sales pitch. We didn't have a discussion. Actually, over the last 10 years, over discussing whether we should or shouldn't move, I don't think we actually had a community discussion. We had different sides presenting at a commission meeting, their thoughts on it, and quite frankly, it, it's, it, it didn't get much community input. Those folks who are going to benefit from this are very much in favor of it. Those of us who are going to pay for it and recognize that there are possibly some things that could make this fail are going to be unhappy for a long time. I think there's no reason that you can't draw these tax credits in May after you've worked out the problems that we're talking about. If there's no parking problem, you should be able to describe to us a parking management plan that actually shows how you're going to deal with it. And we haven't had any of that. So, for those reasons, there's been other things suggested that the, that commissions never made, made a decision about this. I would suggest to you, as a summary from the minutes from 2012, 2012, 8/11, 8/8/11, the commission voted for City Hall to remain in its current location. Judge O'Brien continued research expanding the court in front of the Meg Street Building. If I go down a little further, we'll also show where a commission voted to continue to offer muni court to expand toward Meg Street. So the assertions presented at the meeting that we've been kicking the can down the road and not taking any action are not entirely accurate. I recognize no action's been taken, but some decisions have been made. So I won't drag this on, we need to get to the vote.
Others wishing to comment or ask questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I just wanna say, it's very exciting to be a part of this community, and everyone's so excited about whether they like it or they don't. I like the fact that everyone's speaking up, and I hope they continue to do so. I appreciate those that have reached out to me. I really think that if you look at this opportunity, there are so many positives to it that you could not begin to, I'm not gonna go through all those because we'll be here all night, but we may have been talking about this for 10 years, but how much longer do you want to talk about it before we actually take action? And we could talk about it for another two years? It's time to make a decision, and the positives outweigh any other possibilities of trying to stay here. I have to thank Mr. Miller. I agree, I would not bring anybody here either. If I needed to, I would have, I would find a different meeting space. Part of saying Sandusky is an amazing place to be is you need to be able to take people around, take journalists, take future business owners somewhere to a meeting space, but I look to meet with people other than here. We need to move on, we need to move on from this space, and we need to put more business where it needs to go. So, thank you to all those that have spoke up. I still do not believe that there will be a parking issue because of the mixed-use portion of this project. We're going to be using the same parking spaces, but at different times of the day, and it definitely solidifies my vote that we have the Bayfront Corridor Committee and the Finance Committee backing this. So thank you for all that have reached out, and I'm prepared to vote yes tonight to keep this project moving forward.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Chairman. Ms. Lockhart.
I guess I've taken a lot of phone calls and talks...
We're going to be using the same parking spaces, but at different times of the day. And it definitely solidifies my vote that we have the Bayfront Corridor Committee and the Finance Committee backing this. So thank you for all that have reached out and I'm prepared to vote yes tonight to keep this project moving forward.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockhart.
I guess I've taken a lot of phone calls, talked to quite a few people and gone to some of the public forums other than at the firehouse. And I haven't heard anyone in the public really in favor of this. So when it comes to vetting, I don't believe we've vetted the public at all in this. What we've done is we've vetted staff and committees throughout the city, or I should say committees within the city itself rather than vetting the people. You know, part of what we're talking about here is the City Hall. And City Hall started out a long time ago as a hall where people gathered. Even in Roman times, we gathered together to discuss issues that concern the people of the city or region or area that it served. And I guess the major function was to enhance the life and quality of life of the people in the city. And so I'm not sure that taking City Hall and turning it into a condominium enhances anyone's life. What this does is enhances a business deal. And I've said before and I'll say again, that the city is in the business of people, not in the business of business. And that's what we're doing here. We're making a business deal. We're not making a benefit for the people of the city of Sandusky. You know, it's been discussed that we are having a letter of intent. A letter of intent is fine in itself, but what does that letter intend to do? It intends to have us move into a condominium. Just because we can do it financially doesn't mean it's a good deal. Just because we can doesn't mean that we should. This is a lifetime occurrence for this city. You've said it yourself and many of you know it and you've been here for a lot longer than I have. This is a life occurrence. And this is the best decision that we can make for a life occurrence for the city, to turn it into a condominium? Millions of dollars more than we projected that it would be. There have been many ideas before this that have suggested that we could do this a lot cheaper with all three departments. But today, we're doing this because we think it's a good deal financially, but not in the benefits of the citizens. You know, what I see today before me are some people who live in this city and some who do not. Some are involved in business, but what I don't see is the bulk of the citizens in this community here. But I have heard from them, many of us have. And I doubt that many of us can say that everyone in the city is in support of this. In fact, many of them are even confused as to what they'll be getting for this money. Some of them think that we'll inhabit all three structures downtown. We will not. We'll have a portion of it, we'll have our condominium space. And in this lifetime, some of you may not even be around. You know, additionally, I guess, one question that comes to mind and staff may be able to answer this. We'll be moving the city administration. How long is the projected time before we'll move the courts and police station?
Is that a question?
It is a question.
Through the commission president to Commissioner Lockhart, we're looking at approximately a move-in date of July first, two thousand eighteen, I believe, for the administrative offices. While we have more work to do, including site selection and ultimately it will be a more traditional public works project for the Justice Center. Our goal is to be in about a twelve-month lapse between moving into the administrative offices and then moving into the new Justice Center project.
So I guess let me be clear about my question. When will the construction start? When will they be able to move into a police station or new City Hall?
Through the commission president, Commissioner Lockhart, I can't answer that question definitively at this time.
Reasonably asserted, it'll be above two, perhaps like three years. Is that right, generally? It won't happen within the next three years, do you believe?
Through the commission president to Commissioner Lockhart, I believe July first, two thousand nineteen is less than three years.
Okay. So over the next few years, the police station will remain in this building. Is that right?
Through the commission president to Commissioner Lockhart, yes.
Okay. So over the next few years, it's fine for the police station or court to remain in this building that's dilapidated? Which means that we'll probably be in a better financial situation in a few years. But we're in a hurry to move this building. We're in a hurry to move the administration to the new building. It seems to me that we're in a hurry to do this when financially we'll be in a better position over the next three years. And so, you know, it seems like we're rushing into something that's a lifetime occurrence that we should take heed to. That something that we leave behind doesn't have to be done just because it makes, it appears to make, it appears to make financial sense, but it's not in the best interest of the people. There's no significant benefit to the people of Sandusky to move this. The benefit goes to business. And again, I say, we're not in the business of business, we're in the business of people in the city of Sandusky. I, you know, is there another, you know, are there other cities that rent lease out their City Hall into condominiums? I don't think, I don't think so. And if they do, I mean, to me, I just don't think it's a good idea. I believe it's a good move based upon what I've heard, based upon what I've talked to. It's just not really a good idea. The people aren't involved in this.
I do have a letter, so I want to take just a moment to read into the record that I received today from Doug Milkie, Executive Vice President, General Counsel at Cedar Fair. Says, "I am writing to you in connection with a recently approved plan to explore the relocation of the city building to downtown Sandusky. The proactive approach to making this move is consistent with the momentum that has been created throughout the city for greater economic development. As we have indicated on many occasions, from our perspective, the more the area can grow and develop, the better it will be for the residents of Sandusky and Erie County. We are encouraged by this recent decision and the possibilities it will unlock for a higher and better use of the current site. We look forward to the continued growth and development of our area in an ongoing cooperative relationship with the city. I do have a few thoughts that I'd like to share given the importance of this issue. No public officer has ever woken up and said, "I want to invest in buildings," either to build new buildings or to rehabilitate old buildings. We would all rather do the politically popular and much easier thing of providing more immediate services. Instead, however, it is our responsibility to make sure that the city has adequate facilities to support those services now and in the future. As a city, we have repeatedly requested and received the same advice. Our Meg Street facility is inefficient, at risk in several ways, and is not worth significant reinvestment. No one, not a single soul, has put forth any evidence to the contrary. To do nothing is not a responsible option and it is instead a false choice. Waiting will only incur more expense in the form of repairs to a facility twenty years past its expected useful life, making its eventual replacement even more expensive. We know the real question is not whether we should invest sixteen to eighteen million dollars. We know we have to do that. Instead, the real question is whether it makes more sense to reinvest those dollars in this facility or to reinvest elsewhere and get a whole lot more for our investment in the form of the investment of millions of private dollars in the ability to stimulate more development as a result, even as we open up this beautiful piece of property to be reimagined in the future. Just as a family cannot responsibly budget everything to food or to cars or to vacations or to a house or to entertainment or to a retirement, a city has to do many things at the same time. And we must invest in police and fire and streets and parks and trees and yes, we must invest in facilities. We have never said that we would not one day address this issue. It has been looming over city government for well over ten years. This is the right time to undertake this project financially. As has been explained, with large debt payments coming off of our books in the near term, the project will allow us to make these necessary reinvestments and reduce our debt payments by half from one point two million dollars a year to six hundred thousand dollars a year. Not a penny of issue eight money would go into this project. And in fact, at its conclusion, the city would have more free cash flow available for either immediate services or investments in other capital projects ranging from streets to parks to trees. It is the responsibility of the commission to make decisions about our municipal facilities. We are elected to take a close look at all the issues that a city faces. Facilities are just one part of that equation. Because we are committed to our elected responsibilities, we have studied these issues more than most people can or want to. That is why we have a representative democracy and as such, we cannot shirk from our responsibility to make these decisions. When issue eight was passed, a critical component to the overall plan was that much of the money had to be invested in economic development. In other words, if we spent all the money on services, we would end up in the exact same bind ten years or so in the future when the demand for services would again exceed our revenues. The only way forward for the city was economic development so that we would grow the local economy and our local tax base. Sandusky is doing just that and this project represents a unique opportunity to both replace facilities and attract substantial private investment. Sandusky was built by optimistic, progressive, and bold people. They embraced their future with confidence and made calculated decisions about how to best invest in and build their future, all the while knowing that there are no crystal balls in personal or public matters. There are nearly an infinite number of variables and questions to be asked and answered going forward. From where the police department and municipal court will be located, to what they will look like, to what additional investment this might draw beyond the five million dollars being committed by Vintage Development, to what will happen with the current City Hall and Battery Park and Surf Sub property. Each will no doubt be discussed and debated. But to wait to act on part until we know the answer to each and every question would simply lead to paralysis and no decision at all. If our predecessors acted that way, we would not find ourselves in the proud city in which we live today. The city has, for almost three years now, made a series of decisions designed to reverse a long downward spiral. It is not the time to flinch, but instead to continue forward to secure our city's long-term future. Today's decision is but one, an important one to be sure, and a revitalization that we all know is working and with good stewardship can be secured for decades to come.
Mrs. Cresser, would you please call the vote?
Yes, starting with Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Please rotate it.
And now, that was, excuse me, was that on the motion or?
Yes, that was the motion.
It was on the motion, now on the ordinance, please.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
No.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That legislation is adopted. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number two, please?
Item two is a resolution authorizing the disposal of used computers and related equipment as being unnecessary and unfit for city use, approving their donation to the Goodwill Industries of Erie, Huron, Ottawa, and Sandusky Counties Incorporated. This is a second reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the second reading.
Second.
Then a motion, second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item three is an ordinance amending Part eleven, Planning and Zoning Code, Title V, Additional Zoning Requirements, Chapter one one five one, Nonconforming Structures and Uses, Section one one five one, dot zero two, Nonconforming Uses of the Codified Ordinances in the manner and way specifically set forth here and below.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second discussion. This is of course the same legislation, or this is the legislation to which Mrs. Sparks spoke and which we had the hearing before. I think this is a good change. It provides fair notice to the residents of our city when changes are being contemplated by the neighbors' use of their property. It was essentially just a missing piece of our legislation and I'm glad that we caught it and I'm glad that we're addressing it. Are there questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. Murray, can we just clarify, was that under first reading or section fourteen?
No, section fourteen, just first reading.
I understood it to be under first reading.
I want to clarify.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That is passed on first reading. Item number four, please.
Item four is an ordinance approving and accepting certain real property identified as parcel number five seven dash zero three three four three dot zero 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 and parcel number five seven dash zero four four one four dot zero zero zero, located at three one four and three one eight Reese Street as a gift of deed for acquisition into the land utilization program and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, a second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number five, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item five is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city as part of the land utilization program identified as parcel number six zero dash zero zero four three nine dot zero zero zero, located at one zero two three Bennett Avenue, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement with respect to that real property and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Excuse me, now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. And I should explain for folks maybe listening at home why we're not voting across the table the way we normally do. There was just, we overlooked to change the order that we always change it in, so we are still maintaining some randomness. So Mr. Waddington is voting at the end. Would you present item number six, please?
Thank you for that. Item six is an ordinance declaring that certain real property owned by the city as part of the land utilization program identified as parcel number five seven dash zero zero five zero six dot zero zero zero, located on the east side of Warren Street, formerly known as one zero one one Warren Street, is no longer needed for any municipal purpose and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement with respect to that real property and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion, a second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Yes, with item number seven, need to accept the fiscal officer certificates first prior to the reading of the legislation.
I see, okay. Would someone care to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer certificates?
So move.
Second.
Then a motion, a second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That motion is passed. And if someone cared to make a motion to pass the ordinance, there is only one ordinance despite the way it's presented here.
There's three.
Oh, I thought you indicated that we could vote on all of them at once, or that's the acceptance.
Fiscal officer certificates, you can vote in one motion.
Okay.
But the orders have to be read separate.
Very good. So would you present item seven A, then, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seven A is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of three hundred thousand dollars notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of acquiring salt trucks for the street department
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Yes, with item number seven, need to accept the fiscal officer certificates first prior to the reading of the legislation.
I see, okay. Would someone care to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer certificates?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Yes, with item number seven, need to accept the fiscal officer certificates first prior to the reading of the legislation.
I see, okay. Would someone care to make a motion to accept the fiscal officer certificates?
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Item seven B, please.
Seven B is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $1,200,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of acquiring a ladder truck for the fire department and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance, seven B, under suspension of rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Seven C, please.
Seven C is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $1,950,000 in notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of, number one, acquiring a triple combination fire pumper truck and a pertinent equipment for the fire department; two, revitalizing the Bayfront Urban Revitalization Area by acquiring, clearing, and improving certain properties in that area, undertaking the environmental cleanup and remediation of certain properties in that area, constructing road improvements and related utility and infrastructure improvements in that area, and otherwise improving that area; and, three, paying a portion of the cost of eliminating great crossings by constructing the Venice Road Great Separation Project in cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Item eight is an ordinance accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Erie County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Poole?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please.
Item eight is an ordinance accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Erie County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter. Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted.
Item eight is an ordinance accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Erie County Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number nine, please.
Item nine is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Ed Berdu and Company of Sandusky, Ohio, for the demolition and asbestos abatement of the former GNC Foundry project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Lasko, I would, I would venture to guess that Mr. Berdu has figured out the value of a local preference. As he came to low bidder by using local preference by $456 on a quarter of a million dollar job. That's, that's wonderful for him.
And as a reminder, we do have a local preference option that we adopted and cities are allowed to adopt charter cities, 3% for a local, City of Sandusky contractor. And I've forgotten the other details. If anyone remembers, I think it was 2% or 1% for someone else in Erie County. Mr. Klein, you're nodding like you remember those. What is the next step?
It drops down to within Erie County. I believe it's 2%. And I believe the surrounding counties even drops down to maybe 1% or 1.5%.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I just ask someone, just describe this project and tell us what it's going to be, what it's going to look like when it's done, what people expect for the end result.
I asked through the commission president to Commissioner Poole, with the bid specifications or the demo specifications that went out on this project, what we're basically going to end with is something that doesn't look unlike the Sandusky Cabinet's property, which is basically a fully flat piece of grass. If everyone knows the facility, what that basically means is everything on site, including the administration building and the two accessory structures. There's about six acres of pocketed slab concrete that would come out as well, all the deteriorated fencing, the dead trees, and then there's some site security lighting that would come out as well. So it's returning the property back to a flat piece of grass, including, again, the asbestos abatement in the administration building.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 10, please.
Item 10 is an ordinance declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed CDBG fiscal year 2016 residential demolition project number one and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd. I mean, Ms. Twine. Sorry.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
Of note, 923 Ogden Street will not be funded with CDBG funds, but removal of line safe structure funds. All the rest are under CDBG. Out of the other six, sir.
Ms. Twine? Other questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 11, please.
Number 11 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hank's Plumbing and Heating Company Incorporated of Toledo, Ohio, for the Big Island Water Works Emergency Intake Rehabilitation and Chemical Feed Line Installation Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion? Mr. Klein, it's the same procedure we've talked about before. We obviously need to repair the emergency intake and then we're going to get that, that chemical feed all the way out so that it can address the water longer and the contaminants in the water longer so that they fall out and they're less harmful side products available that turn into THMs as we push this water, which is a carcinogen, further out into the community. So it's a good way to get a better bang for a buck and make the public safer still. Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. I have number 12, please.
Item 12 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional contract administration and inspection services with CT Consultants of Toledo, Ohio, for the Big Island Water Works Emergency Intake Rehabilitation and Chemical Feed Line Installation Project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion? Mr. Klein, fair to say this is to make sure that the contract we just let out doesn't get cheated. We don't get cheated by the guys who just, we prove to do the work. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
There's a slight point of clarification in the previous ordinance we mentioned, inspection, but that really is not the case. Inspection is going to be done in this, in this specific ordinance. We're not allowing the contractor to inspect his own work. When we speak of inspection in the previous ordinance, we will be doing some inspection itself, but we're paying to have it inspected by, by these folks in this ordinance.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 13, please.
Item 13 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Precision Paving Incorporated of Mylan, Ohio, for the 2016 street resurfacing project and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
It's McKelvey, Franklin, Neal, and Bell Streets. And when I read through my packet, it's been 20 years since we've done anything there, so I, I think that's good. That's well needed in that area. And then they're going to regrade the tree areas where there's not curving in that, too? Did I read that right? Too many trees. And then curves put in where there wasn't. Okay.
Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 14, please.
Item 14 is a resolution authorizing the disposal of used dive equipment and related items as being unnecessary and unfit for city use, approving their donation to the Ottawa County Sheriff's Office Dive Team, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion? Chief Orzak, a great example of cooperative work with one of our, our local law enforcement agencies. And I'm glad that we're, I know the fire department has taken over these responsibilities in recent years, so there isn't a need to, they have duplicated equipment and services. The fire department's indicated they really can't use these because they have newer and better equipment, better condition. But I think giving it to the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department is a great idea, so appreciate that, that initiative. If there aren't any further questions or comments, Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That items, that ordinance is, our resolution, excuse me, is adopted. Before we get to item 15, let me ask, do we need an executive session before we take up issue 15? I'm asking the commission.
No.
No, we're good? Okay. All right. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number 15, please?
Item 15 is an ordinance ratifying, accepting, and approving a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sandusky and Ohio Charter Municipal Corporation and the International Association of Firefighters Local Number 327, the collective bargaining unit for certain employees of the Sandusky Fire Department for the period January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2018, a copy of which is attached to this ordinance and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion? Mr. Harris, our chief, anything that you wish to add or comment? I mean, we've, it's been a long time in these negotiations. I'm personally very pleased that the city and the firefighters were able to reach an amicable resolution and we can go forward together and we have a little bit of increased flexibility so that we can better serve the residents' needs. Anything either of you wish to add?
I'll go ahead and take that. Mr. President, commissioners, it was a little bit longer. The process is slightly longer than, than we'd hoped for, but in the end, the union and the city, I thought, negotiated fairly. I thought that the, the union, they got some of what they want. We got some of what we want, which usually happens in negotiations. And I think overall that it's, we're able to keep the, the fire stations open. We're able to provide equipment for them so that they can do their jobs safely. Also, compensation for them for doing the job as well, as well as savings for the city. So we can go ahead and keep the amount of staff that we keep right now. And I think it just worked out best for everybody.
Good. Thanks, chief. Commissioners, questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is, is adopted. Item number 16, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Item 16 is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase 10 Dell rugged tablets and associated docking and mounting hardware from Ultra Level Incorporated of Southfield, Michigan, for the Sandusky Police and Fire Departments and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Discussion? Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number 17, please.
Item 17 is a request that we received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for